Okay, folks, it is six o'clock. And we actually have a quorum, even though I don't think we really need it for a study session, but calling this meeting to order, would the clerk please call the roll?
Michaels. Owen. Pugh. Rodriguez.
Here.
Rogers. Sexton. Smith. Store.
President.
Straub. Taylor.
Here.
Thorson. Vantage Theorot. Wilson.
Here.
Covert. Esri.
Here.
Farney.
Here.
Fortato. Greer. Hanauer Friedman.
Here.
Locke.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
And we do have a quorum. All right, with the clerk, please read the notice of the meeting.
Notice is hereby given that a study session of the County Board, Champaign County, Illinois, will convene on June 25th, 2024 at 6:00 PM in the Shields-Carter Meeting Room, Brookins Administrative Center, 1776 East Washington Street, Urbana, Illinois, and said county for the purpose of discussing the elimination of the office of the county auditor as an elected position.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Right, Esri and then Lockshin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Okay, we have public comment up next, Susan Mantel. Just push the button on the mic and when it turns red, we're good to go.
Good evening. I'm going to read a statement from our county auditor candidate. I am Susan Mantel, I'm the Champaign County GOP Chairwoman. This is coming from Alan Anderson. Good evening, I apologize for not being able to speak to you all in person tonight due to a prior commitment. To begin, let me say that I am totally for smaller and more efficient government. I have watched many, if not all, of your private, prior meetings on this issue. In those meetings, I have never seen an analysis of the benefits this change would bestow upon our county. It appears to me that to be merely a consolidation of power in the executive. I have never met Steve Summers, but I certainly hope he is an honorable and ethical executive. When considering a change such as this, one must look to the future and the possibility that the executive may not always be so trustworthy. Being cognizant of the history of politics and Illinois politics in particular, the people of Champaign County should be leery of such a change without any corresponding benefits. One of the duties of the auditor is to be a steward of the taxes collected by Champaign County. Quoting from the auditor's website, "The auditor also performs economy and efficiency audits. The auditor is elected by the voters and functions as an independent watchdog for taxpayers." I cannot imagine an appointed auditor performing economy and efficiency audits nor being an effective watchdog for taxpayers. Instead, I fear the result would be a chihuahua doing the bidding over its owner. The value of an independent auditor should not be summarily discarded. My last point, the most obvious, is the poor timing of this discussion. As was mentioned in a prior meeting of the board, the time to consider such a change is not in the year the office is up for election. If I were on the board, I would put forth a motion that all discussions on this matter be delayed until after the election and the new board is seated. To do otherwise would be confusing for the voters and show a complete disdain for the time, money, and efforts of the candidates and their advocates. In conclusion, I am confident that the board and the people of Champaign County will come to the right decision in this manner. I look forward, in this matter, sorry. I look forward to working with the board in 2025 and the years that follow, demonstrating the benefits of having an awesome auditor working for Champaign County. Signed, Alan Anderson. In addition, I would also like to say that I am completely opposed to making this position a, an appointed position, for the mere reasons that Alan just stated. It's our duty as, as people in office to make sure that our taxpayer dollars are being properly spent, and in order to do that, we have to have oversight. Without oversight, lots of things can happen. And I, I do believe that Steve is an honorable person, but maybe the next person won't be. And I also have heard through the grapevine that there is consideration of bringing all of the auditor employees underneath the executive section. I think that is also a mismanagement of taxpayer dollars. The auditor's job is to make sure the money is being spent appropriately and that we're not taxing our constituents when they shouldn't need to be taxed. And if we're wasting money or we're not using money in the ways it should be used, we're not going to catch that if we appoint someone that we, we like or that we, you know, we want to have in the position. In addition, I also feel that this has to do with the fact that the current Democrat Party doesn't appear to like their auditor, and I think that this is a courage thing. I think when you don't like your auditor, then, and you have no resolution but to allow him to be elected out of office, you have to, to do the hard things. And you have to stand up and put it out there and put it out there to your constituents and say, this is why we don't like our auditor. But I don't even know why you don't like your auditor, but it's very clear, it's, it's been very clear in many of the meetings that, that that's one of the reasons why it appears that you're trying to consolidate the power and have more ability to fire someone if you don't like them, just like you did with the zoning board of appeals. When you didn't like their decision, you fired them and then you appointed new people. And again, it, it makes it appear that you are not looking out for the constituents in Champaign County. We all live here, we all pay taxes, and we all should have a voice. And without the oversight, we are, we're doomed. And it shouldn't matter if you're a Republican or a Democrat, everyone needs oversight. And we should all have the oversight through electing our officials that are providing that, just like we do with Congress, just like we do with other bodies that do oversight. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, we meet again. This time, you've been called here by the county executive to once again consider his pet scheme that only four of you voted for on December 21st last year. So you are now assembled here to deliberate again and again until you get it right, at least by the county executive's lights. In truth, you're being corralled and spoken at interminably to weaken your individual will and to give five Democratic renegades your assent to this very personal and arbitrary so-called reform. If there were truth in advertising, this forum would be called not a study session, but a struggle session. Please reference the totalitarian bullying that occurred in the 1950s Chinese Communist Party to compel conformity among their members. Illinois endows its voters with a strong and effective local government safeguard over taxpayer money, the elected auditor. The purpose of an auditor is to perform an independent assessment of a financial representation or expense. To be truly independent, the auditor must be elected directly by the people so he can give it to you straight without the threat of losing his job, whether by displeasing the county executive who hired him or by facing a November ballot item that could eliminate the very office to which voters just elected him. The ballot item could be better worded thus, voters. Would you like to have the county executive appoint his politically dependent bookkeeper and ignore your choice for the independent auditor you elected further down on this very page? The 2024 election has precious few contested elections for the voters to express their will. It would be a travesty of democracy for this board to eliminate one of the few offices for which there is a contest this fall. That reduction in democracy would itself be coming from a board with few contested elections even in primaries. In fact, two of the biggest advocates of this referendum gathered not a single petition signature for themselves, whether as a board member or as a committee, a precinct committee woman. And they asked the voters to just trust them as they eliminate the one obstacle to their most treasured plan, the expansion of the county government they control. Your packet includes a League of Women Voters study by a commissioned consultant that was practically shelved after I publicized and refuted its contents. It's not current, it's from 2022. The consultant gets many things wrong about our county. I'll address just two of them. The report posits a trade-off between independence via election and professionalism that could supposedly be better assured with appointment lest the voters elect somebody merely popular. But at least half the elected auditors in Illinois have, as I do, a CPA or similar credential, and the voters value that. On the other hand, the county executive had a very hard time finding a budget director and had to ask him to resubmit his application after withdrawing it because the other two top-tier candidates declined. A related falsehood from Bellwether, the League's consultant, is that auditor independence is rarely put to use. I told you this was from 2022, and board members, are you asking me to finally stand up to you? Is that the problem you have with me? My refutation of the administration's budget projections and of the purported need for a tax increase have been most unwelcome. This is what the League of Women Voters get wrong. The elimination of the elected auditor is a dual sacrifice of actual credentials that you have right now and of independence. They'd allow the county executive to appoint a dependent hireling incapable of taxpayer advocacy and still have no guarantee of finding a CPA in the current market. Let's be clear, I blew the whistle hard on the quarter cent tax hike and gave the lie to the doomsday scenario used to justify it. The second move to eliminate my office is every bit the retaliation that the smear campaign was. In fact, the smear campaign was designed to make the second vote to eliminate my office succeed where the first one failed. Those of you capable of dissent, do not be party to such scurrility. You do not change the structure of government, which is a permanent thing, to get your way on passing personnel, personnel preferences. That is the way of the banana republic. Just because the flawed Illinois constitution allows you to do something, doesn't mean you should do it. The structure of government should be stable. Changes can and will come. That's what elections are for. Let's give three cheers for professionalism, independence, and democracy.
Thank you.
I have, I have a letter from McHenry, the elected county auditor, Shannon Theresa. I think everyone should have access to that. You saw that back in December, but...
Moving on to communications. Any communications from the board? Sure, Carter.
I would like to propose, if we're eliminating the coroner and the auditor's position, I would like to eliminate the executive's position as well. So I think if we are going to give voters the right, we should look at it all across the board and include those, those offices. So that would be the executive's office, the auditor's office, and the coroner's office as well. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Thanks, Steve. We've changed the topic briefly. Seventy-four years ago on this day, June 25th, 1950, the North Koreans invaded South Korea. And back in World War II, after World War II, North and South were split along the 38th parallel. And then initially on in 1950, the North Korean communists led by, guess what? Guess who? The grandfather of the current leader of North Korea. Overwhelmed the South Koreans, about 2 million Koreans were killed in this three-year conflict. However, there was a one major brilliant and audacious move by General Douglas MacArthur at Incheon, who happened to save the South Koreans. Communist forces were forced back across the 38th parallel. An armistice was signed in 1953, although the war has not stopped. I have personally been to Korea three times in my life, and I have also visited the DMZ, the Demilitarized Zone, and I've also seen the, the tunnels that the North Koreans dug to get underneath and invade South Korea. Actually, I actually even toured one of those tunnels. Very impressive tunnel, but it was actually discovered and the North Koreans weren't able to invade through that avenue. So again, over 2 million deaths, 37,000 were Americans. According to the VA, 1.2 million Korean veterans are alive today, which is about 6% of all veterans in the United States. If you see one today or you see one this month, tell them thank you for your service and that you appreciate them. End of my communication.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else? Before we move on, just a short point of information, this meeting was called by members of the county board. I did not call this meeting, I simply chair it. So just so the viewing public are aware of that. Ms. Carter?
And, and the chair of the board was not notified through email or correspondence with any other board members about this meeting, so let that be for the record as well. Thank you.
All right, presentations and discussions, League of Women Voters of Champaign County.
So thank you for allowing us to come here this evening. I'm really glad to be here. Actually, I thought my house was going to blow away this afternoon, so I'm really glad to be here. So I'm Tricia Crowley and co-chair of a study that we did two years ago on whether to abolish the office of elected auditor, among other things. And Deb Bucie, who was co-chair of that study, and so it's our, it's a conclusion of the League of Women Voters that Champaign County does not need an elected auditor. And I think the League of Women Voters is a defender of democracy. And if we thought that this was a, a decrease of democracy, we wouldn't be in support of it. But we have real reasons for why we support this position, and we'll talk to you about them today, so. So 20 counties over 75,000 are authorized to have unelected auditors. Three counties have eliminated them, Lake, DeKalb, and Kendall. And McLean County has recently voted to put the, the referenda to abolish an auditor on their ballot in November. And the county auditor's office has a long history of failures of performance. And this is just, you know, some that you get browsing through the, the archives of the news gazette. In 1966, the independent outside auditor reported that Champaign County had not had a full audit in 10 years. Candidate for auditor Laurel Pressing said in 1970 that there hadn't been an audit, full audit in 22 years, all of this under an elected auditor. And then more recently, for the years 2015 to 2023, the county's comprehensive annual financial report has not been completed on time, sometimes so late that it was endangering the receipt of pass-through funds from the federal government. And the completion of CAFR is a primary responsibility of an auditor. There have been proposals to eliminate the office in the past. I just sort of, what, what has a familiar ring? In 1996, one of the candidates running for auditor, Ed Ryan, ran on a platform recommending the elimination of the office. In 19, in 2003, county board members Tony Fabry and Bob Kirchner proposed to eliminate the office as a cost-saving measure. But 1909, after revelations that the then auditor, Tony Fabry, was rarely in the office, proposals were again made and a referendum was put on the ballot in 2010, and it failed. And one little fact that I came across as I was perusing the news gazette was that the treasurer of the Vote No campaign was the DuPage County elected auditor. It was a, they were the, he was the treasurer of the, the campaign fund for the Vote No campaign, so. In 2022, the League of Women Voters approved a position recommending the abolition of the elected auditor office after a comprehensive study that included a community task force. The study is available on the League's website and under the local issues section, so it's still available. This position was not taken because of the failures of individual auditors, but because the elected auditor system is not good public policy. And why do we say that? What are the responsibilities of the auditor? Most people, most members of the public couldn't tell you what the auditor does. And they're supposed to evaluate the qualifications of the people who are running for the office? What are the requirements? No requirements, other than being a registered voter of the county. The statute does require that the auditor, if elected, takes 20 hours of professional training in order to be in charge of, of the auditing requirements for a $215 million budget. Does that make sense? And, and again, the question is not whether any one auditor is doing a good job, because some auditors do. The question is whether the structure of the office is such that you're going to get someone who does a good job, and the answer is no. So what value does an elected auditor who is paid approximately $100,000 a year add to the county's financial operations? Historically, it's been the chief deputy auditor who's been responsible for direct oversight of the auditor's office, staff, and operations. The auditor's office has functioned responsibly and successfully even when the elected auditor is continually absent or not engaged in daily office activities. So what about the county auditor's watchdog role? This is what we hear whenever the question of abolishing the office comes up. County auditor is the watchdog. How likely is it that a Democratic auditor is going to publicly criticize another Democratic elected official? Are we, have any examples of that? A professional financial system has internal controls to prevent fraudulent payments. These kinds of professional financial systems were not, were not in place when elected auditors were first instituted. Accounting has gotten more complicated, complex, and also more, has more integrity. A comprehensive annual financial audit by an independent outside auditor is already required. This is how other local governments keep the public informed. So the idea that only an elected auditor can be a watchdog, well, why is there only an auditor in the county? Why aren't there city auditors or other local governments? And the answer is you have, they have systems in place that will, that will, that will turn up fraud and erroneous payments, but they also have professional, professional So what would be best for the county's annual $215 million operation? An elected politician or a qualified finance professional? What happens if the position is elected or eliminated? There are, as I said, there are counties already in Illinois, Lake, for instance, a county which I think is bigger than us, has a, a finance department that includes divisions. There are other options for structure that would make sure that the, that the operations of the financial system are professionally accomplished. And if the auditor's office is eliminated, then those would be a matter of discussion for the board and decision for the board. And the elected executive? And the elected executive, yeah. So anybody have any questions? You want to add anything, Deb? I think you covered it.
Questions? Dr. Store.
Thank you. I, I read through your report, thank you. And I, or the report in part drawn up by your consultant. And I was actually present some years ago when the mayor of Dixon, Illinois, had the unhappy duty of announcing that millions of dollars had been embezzled from the city and by a lady who bought lots of show horses and so forth. And she had done this for quite a long time, and it was never observed, noticed, or reported by the external auditors.
And I think the external auditors paid for that. They were...
That's beside the point. That's beside the point. And, and I...
Can, can a, can an error ever, never occur under the ordinary management systems? Of course errors can occur.
I, I really don't want to, you know, kind of, you know, debate hypotheticals. I, I, the, the point of it is, is that having multiple eyes, multiple observers on, on the, on the egg basket, as it were, kind of helped to assure that, give confidence that, that all the eggs and all the expenditures are, are correct and, and allowed as approved. So, and I, as, as to the, the point in that there's going to be cost savings, I...
Let, let's say, that was an aspect that was presented in an earlier proposal.
I think I saw it on...
We have not, we have not indicated that there would be cost savings from this process. Now, our study does not say that.
Okay, it, it was mentioned a few times in the report, though.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they just mentioned that the, the salary of an auditor being around $100,000, but I don't think they mentioned anything as far as cost savings by eliminating that. It was more in relation to the qualifications and, and, you know.
If there's no debate on that point, I, I'll concede.
Ellie.
Can we just clarify, you're not, your report is not recommending that the position be eliminated, it's recommending that it no longer be an elected position. Is that correct?
And at that point, it would be up to the county board as to how their financial system would be structured.
And I think we would purport that Lake County is a very well-run county, and their structure there is to have a finance department where they deal with budgeting, auditing, and purchasing. And there are, you know, they hire professionals to handle, manage all aspects of that finance department, and there is a director of finance to oversee those operations, all of those individuals of whom are expected to bring the highest standards of professional excellence to the work that they do.
Sure, Carter.
So have you did any studies on why Will County and Champaign County still have an executive form of government?
Yes, we did.
We did. Would you mind presenting?
We're, we had, we, that is part of the, the original study, but that question hasn't been raised by the county board at this time, so... So, you know, I could go on about that, but as far as I'm concerned, it's not relevant to what this study session is addressing.
Okay. Because I see here that you did, you know, mention that the county executive form of government, but...
We have other goals than just the elimination of the elected auditor, but this is the one that seems possible to be tackled right now.
Okay. Would you, could you give me your input on the executive form of government? Is it something that works for Illinois, even though there's only two counties that still have that form of government? Would you say that that's a positive thing moving forward? Or, I mean, I'm looking at it from all perspectives. If we have reasonings to eliminate...
Point of order on that. I don't think that they're prepared to discuss that today.
Further point of order, I believe it's beyond the scope of what was noticed to the public.
But it's in their findings, in their report.
But in terms of what was noticed in the meeting notice to the public, to give notice within Open Meetings Act, I don't believe we've noticed the public regarding anything about, we could, at a future time, have that discussion, but I don't believe it's proper now.
I would like to have you both back, please.
We love to talk to you guys.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Feel free to stop me. I think I've actually had a similar question to Ms. Carter, but I'm going to come at it from a different way. And I just want to address, I'm really red, I don't know why I'm flushed, I'm just flushed, I'm not sunburnt, I don't know what's going on with me. Okay, back to the regularly scheduled program. What I'm interested in hearing your thoughts about, and I want to make sure that I'm keeping the substance of my question on the issue of the auditor. A big point of concern that I see kind of threaded throughout your report is a concern with the consolidation of power within the administrative side of things, right? And then it seems the solution is that you offer a different form, right, to lean on the county board chair form. So, but excluding that part for now, along with all of the benefits and concerns that you see with eliminating the auditor's office, do you have also a concern about further concentration of administrative power? And where does that kind of lie in your calculus and in your determination?
Do you want to, you want to take that one?
I don't think that that is an issue that we studied or took a position on. I believe that we think in today's world, the elected auditor position is somewhat archaic in how the selection process is done and what the expectations can be from that position. And that by making that more administrative, which means that it does go to the administration of county government, is the goal. I hope that answers your question to an extent, but we also believe that in today's world, that kind of administration is better managed with professionals who are educated and have experience in that particular professional realm. It is not a policymaking function, it is a function of managing the day-to-day operations of a $215 million business. And I think that's where our position is.
Thanks, that answers it perfectly.
Ms. Locke.
Hello, thank you for being here. I'm going to get to you first, I want to make a point about Dixon for, because Dr. Store brought it up, and Dixon, Illinois is the boogeyman of what happens when you don't have an elected auditor, right? Like, I brought it up back in December, it's the boogeyman. Some distinctions between Dixon, Illinois and our county, however, are that in Dixon, when they're, the woman who embezzled so many millions of dollars for horses, when she would take a vacation with her horses for all the various reasons, she always had a family member answering her mail, picking things up. That's how she was able to conceal the fraud for so long. We have a more sophisticated system here, when we have an auditor who's not doing their job, somebody else is doing it, it's not, Mr. Danos is not calling his family and saying, hey, go get that. So to be fair, we don't have a system like that in the way that Dixon has. A concern I do have, now back to you, a concern I do have is how do we ensure independence? It's very important to us, as you can, it's very important to have an independent auditor to stave off the boogeyman, we all care about the money. Is it possible, is it something that other counties have done where even if there's an executive, they could have the appointed auditor answer to a different party, be it not the executive, but the board, or anything like that? I'm out of my depth on this, I'm just asking if that's a possibility or something that you've explored in doing the study.
I have always believed that that's an issue that the county board can address by entering into a contract with the person that you place in responsibility for the finance department to provide some protections in that contract for just those types of situations. And I just think that's the best way to manage it, because you do want to ensure that if you place it with the director of finance, if you place it with the individual who's responsible for auditing, wherever you place the responsibility, have to have autonomy to be able to ensure that anything is made public. However, you also have a lot of protection by virtue of the fact that in today's world, you're subject to FOIA, there's an Open Meetings Act, and a lot of the issues that might have been issues 50 or 60 years ago have gone away because there's so much transparency in government. Your checkbook is online, your reports are available to the public all the time. So those issues in and of themselves address a lot of that concern, I think.
Thank you.
Jenny.
Just a quick, I guess, point reminder, more than question, but when you brought up Mr. Danos, that reminded me that, you know, this report that we're looking at from you was done two years ago before all of the current friction that is happening. So this is pre any kind of us having a vendetta or whatever we were accused of earlier. I do remember reading the report at that time and Mr. Danos coming out vehemently against it at the time, but this predates any of the current issues that we're having, so I'm trying to look at it from that neutral eye of this is about the position and not the
Ellie.
Can you just share any examples from other counties that you looked at that had eliminated the elected position, how they did restructure that position within their administrations?
I think Deb has the example of Lake, we haven't checked into DeKalb and Kendall. So I'm not, I don't really have any information.
We have looked at Lake as probably the best example. DeKalb and Kendall are both smaller counties than Champaign County. Lake happens to be a larger county. Lake has also, they determined, they made this change in their government, I think almost 30 years ago. And so they are a solid model for how in statutory county government in the state of Illinois, this can work.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. I have a number of questions, and Deb and Trish, thank you so much for being here. And so I have a lot of questions, so I'm just going to ask a couple and pass a baton so that it's fair for everyone to ask questions. Seems reasonable, I think. Besides the League of Women Voters issuing a report capitalizing on the bellwether report, who else has provided an assessment of the veracity or validity or accuracy or need for an auditor besides the League of Women Voters?
I'm not sure, I don't think I know of anyone else in Champaign County that has looked at the issue. In McLean County, they, the League of Women Voters also looked at the issue entirely separately from us, with no relation or contact, and came to the same conclusion. So why is it the League of Women Voters? Because we're interested in government, okay? Why, was it Deb and I both co-chairs? Because we're interested in county government. I worked for the county between 1980 and 1990, and there were some pretty formative years there, right? I was younger. And so I think part of the reason why we do this is because we want to see Champaign County being the best that it can be, okay? And if that's a sort of a, it's not a way far out there, totally impartial feeling, it's because of our experience with the county that we pursued the question.
I think we all want to see Champaign County be the best it could be, right? I believe that's part of our mission and goal statement related to county governance, that it would be the best, and maybe even a, no pun intended, a bellwether for other counties in Illinois of the, whatever it is, 102 counties, I think. So then my next question is, in the interest of democracy, which that's your motto for the League of Women Voters, I think I recall, at least based on the articles I read, because I wasn't here when, I wasn't in county board or anywhere near government back then, at one time I thought there was quite a substantial argument about, what was the guy's name? Tony Fabry. So Tony Fabry, seems like there's a lot of correspondence, I don't know if it's serendipity or whatever, a lot of issues with Tony Fabry back in 2010, 2011, a lot of discussion, make it appointed, or get rid of the auditor, whatever. And finally, it got down to substantial board discussions, and I think it was a 14 to 13 vote to go ahead and send it to the electorate, because you could use the statement, let the public decide, and I can understand that statement. So back in 2011, the public did decide.
2010, yeah.
Right? The public did decide, and I think it was like 56% said, hey, we want to keep an elected auditor. And it seems like we're trying to come full circle to resurrect the issue, even though at one time in the past, not too far distant past, the county electorate did decide that they wanted to keep the auditor position elected. Do we think, or does the League of Women Voters think that maybe the electorate was ill-informed, they didn't understand what they were doing, as you mentioned before, they don't understand what an auditor does? And now we need to re-educate the public to say what the roles and responsibilities of the auditor are, and based upon us educating them, then they would come to this epiphany that the auditor no longer needs to be elected. Is that kind of what your thought is?
Just a little League background, the League can't take a position until it's done a study. In 2010, we had not done a study, so we could not take a position on the issue, and so we weren't active in the campaign, vote yes or vote no, okay? One of the reasons why we did a study is because we think there are issues and that we wanted to be prepared in case the possibility came up again. And so this time, we intend to be very active in trying to educate the public about what the pros and cons are of having an elected auditor. And I just think that it's one of those issues that needs to be discussed with the public. It just, you know, if you just go into the ballot, into the voting booth, and there it is, and nobody's ever told, said anything about it, you know, it's, how do you make an informed decision? So with education of the public during this time period, hopefully, we believe we can have a different outcome.
I appreciate your response. Not 100% on board with it.
Yeah.
There's probably a lot of people in this room that maybe may be watching this that have gone to a voting booth and said, retain Judge A, B, or C, yes or no, and no one knows who in the world that judge is. That just happens so many times. And so many times we walk into, or me have walked into the ballot box and trying to figure out why there is an unconsisted election, or who this candidate is, or who that candidate is not. And I think it's disingenuous. It is upon the, it's incumbent upon the public, every person that has the right to vote, to figure out what in the world they're voting for. And maybe there are some complications related to the roles and responsibilities of an auditor, or the county executive, or the treasurer, or all the different roles and responsibilities. Hardly anybody even knows what a coroner does, let alone the auditor. So I don't think, it's, I think it's disingenuous to say, my opinion, I apologize, my opinion is disingenuous to say we have an undereducated electorate and they don't understand what an auditor is, so if since they really don't understand what an auditor is, let's just not have an elected auditor. To me, that appears, I don't know, it just seems disingenuous. Maybe I'm wrong, it's just a feeling, just correct me on that.
One of the League's major missions is education of voters, and this is what we're trying to do, because we believe that an educated voter is a better voter, right?
100% agree. 100% agree.
So I personally have a policy, I don't vote for people I don't know.
Yeah.
Maybe that means that half the ballot is not filled out, but I try and find out about all of those different things. So going into the ballot box and leaving the election up to people who are just checking off names doesn't strike me as a strength of democracy, right?
An educated public is the best public, there's just no doubt about that. Now, let's talk about function versus person. Let's talk about performance versus what's articulated as far as statute. I believe, based on the limited research I've done, there have been a couple occasions in Champaign County where there have been auditors that have done their job and have done it well. And I think one of them is in this room, and one is not here in this room, both of Mr. Farnie and Diane Michaels. They both did their job well, and they stayed within the guidelines and the functions of an auditor, and the county functioned fine. I guess my question then really is, not the fact that they were Republicans and the ones that failed are Democrats, I suppose there's another county where you could switch the colors between red and blue. But since we have examples in our county where the office of the auditor has functioned well, then I believe that it's more related to the person, not the office. So if the office functions as articulated in the statute and functions well, and they stay within their lane, and the treasurer stays within her lane, and the executive stays within his lane, then there's not a duplication of efforts. The auditor does the auditor function, treasurer does treasurer function, executive does executive function, and so they all stay swimming in their lanes as a team, and then you have a good result. So we're still not getting there why the, this current direction is more related to personality rather than function.
Suppose you have a finance director who is not coming into work.
That's a person, that's just disobeying the rules.
And what do you do? What do you do? You fire them.
Exactly.
Okay, you have an elected auditor who doesn't come into the office, what do you do?
Bad news.
You wait four years.
Yes, but here's the challenge with Illinois law, which you could go the long route, which would be the right route. The law can change so that you can have a referendum, or you could have a recall, you could say, individual A has just done a bad job, the public can write a petition, let's get rid of this person. But we don't have that in Illinois law.
Right, right.
So, but now, because we don't have it in Illinois law, it seems like we want to do a quick fix. I have someone that doesn't show up for work, and then back in 2010, apparently that person barely showed up for work. In fact, he only showed up when it was a transition between his job and when Farnie took the job. So I just, we're still going back to someone's not doing their job, the executive could not do his job, the treasurer, she sometimes doesn't do her job, she sometimes doesn't send out the taxes at the right time. But that doesn't mean we kick out the treasurer and say we want it, because it could be professionalized. I got it, it could be professionalized, we don't need to have an elected treasurer, we can make that a profession. Yet, we have a democracy, a representative democracy, where, okay, the person can be elected, person can be booted out. The public... elected, person can be booted out, the public itself can write a petition, I don't like George Danos, he's doing a bad job, and then have an uproar, and then maybe, maybe he would say, you know what, people don't like me, I think I need to step down. Maybe there's not a big enough public uproar. It just seems that the uproar is within the county board, not necessarily within the public at large.
Jenny.
I'm going to stop, you've got to stop now.
Just based on what, sorry, Mr. Wilson was saying, that's reminding me too, that the, how much, two-hundred-and-fifteen million dollars in the hands of somebody who is elected, based on what? Based on how much they spend on a campaign, based on the whims of the voters who we seem to think, you seem to say may not be fully educated. I disagree. I think that, you know, giving them the choice on whether they would like to see the auditor continue as an elected officer is something within their realm of responsibility, they can figure that out. I just, the elections based on the whims is what's really getting to me about this kind of money. Like, the ability to hire somebody who we know is qualified, whether that can be something that is approved by the board versus an executive, whether that's what we have, I don't know if that's what Ms. Locke was getting at earlier, if that's something that we would be able to do, if that would bring more comfort to people. Just knowing that somebody is qualified and not just the one with the biggest campaign budget is a strong indicator to me that this is something that would benefit Champaign County.
Go ahead.
I ran to the bathroom, so just, in the, where are we in the agenda? Like, are we still directing our questions and concerns here?
Yeah, still League of Women Voters.
So, it seems like we're having discussion, right? I just wanted to clarify where we are.
Well taken. Any further questions for our, go ahead, Dr. Storey.
Thank you, County Executive. Does Peoria County have an auditor? I thought that, I saw something in the documents that they were eliminating it, and maybe even on the news, that the, that a court decision had recently been issued on that.
The last time we checked, who are the auditors in the state of Illinois? Peoria County still had an auditor. An elected auditor, yes.
Okay, maybe somebody else might know.
Maybe.
Yeah, they eliminated the position, and they no longer have an elected auditor.
Okay.
And just to, since it was in the presentation, DeKalb County and Kendall County, they didn't, they eliminated position before anyone ever held the position. So they never had an office of the county auditor. They hit population, they had a referendum to eliminate the office before anyone even took office, just to make sure that clarification's out there as well.
Chair Carter, go ahead, then Dr. Storey.
How many counties have an auditor in Illinois?
Well, based on Peoria County, at this point, sixteen.
Sixteen, okay, thanks.
And there are twenty counties who are eligible to have auditors under the statute, based on population.
I just wanted to point out that, you know, your example of Lake County is, you know, thank you for doing all this work. I truly appreciate the work and value the work of the League of Women Voters. However, I did do a lot of work in the state of Illinois, and I'll have to say that Lake County is, is not just a rich, wealthy county, it's damn rich. And they can pretty much buy whatever they need. So I don't know that that's a particularly good example that would, that Champaign County would be able to follow in, you know, in staffing to the level that Lake County does.
Erin, you had a question?
Yes, thanks. Has the League of Women Voters, have you had any discussion about timing of putting this question on the ballot? Because right now, we are, you know, the auditor's position is up in November, and we have a candidate from both of the major parties running. Just looking through this information here, you know, it mentioned one thing in the report about, you know, maybe making the county board smaller, but that should be addressed closer to twenty thirty, the next census, and remapping, redistricting. Just wondered if the league has discussed that, as to when it, like, you know, if it would be better to wait until, like, two years into a term, or something like that?
Mike.
Wait, so that's why we're doing it now. It seems to be an issue of interest to the public.
Any further questions? Chair Carter?
Do we have data from the public, since it's an interest from the public to eliminate those positions?
We have newspaper articles raising the issue. That's what I consider to be the interest of the public. Letters to the editor, et cetera.
So how many people would you say?
I have no idea.
But there is interest from the public, you're saying from, okay, thanks.
From your discussions.
Any further questions for our presenters? Singan, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, going to kind of review the statutory duties of the elected auditor.
Okay, so I just took the structure of the McLean County memo and went through the duties of an elected auditor to talk about how they're done now, and if we didn't have an elected auditor, how they could be done, or would continue to be done, or possible decision points. So first, a couple of things, just to make sure we're all on the same page. There's no requirement to have a county auditor appointed or elected. The position is not required by the Illinois Constitution. Same for the coroner, which is why those are the two positions that we keep talking about, and we're not talking about any of the other positions, because those are all constitutionally required. The county executive, obviously, is not constitutionally required, but a repeal of that position could not be initiated by the board, it has to be initiated by petition from the voters. The statutory requirement of the county is to do an annual audit of our finances, and that must be completed by a licensed certified public accountant, or someone of equal or comparable skill and experience. And we already meet that requirement with our annual outside audit, that we get done late, but we get done. So if the county board chose to have an appointed auditor, their duties would be assigned by the county board, but their office would have to operate within the executive's office based on the county executive statute that we operate under. They would be appointed, like all of the other departments that have appointed, department heads, highway supervisor of assessments, all of those. So the executive would make a recommendation to the board, the board would yea or nay it, and we'd have an appointed auditor at that point. So it seems like a common piece of this conversation is, how much financial oversight would we have without an elected auditor? And the question is the same, if not more. So financial oversight comes from the county's financial policies, which are approved by the board. There's a couple different versions. There's the version that comes from the auditor's office, which references mostly purchasing, and travel, and business expenses. So that's utilized by the departments on a daily basis. There's a version from the executive's office, which is more budget-related. And then there's some from the treasurer's office, which is much more investment, and in my opinion, the most boring version to try to read. So the financial policies are where the board has their oversight and their guidance, and those can be crafted by the board with very, you know, specific things you want to target or address, and then is approved by you. And those are the financial policies. So when you get your purchases not following policy report, that's because of the financial policies that you approved. That's the policy they didn't follow to do that purchase. So if there's other reporting you want to see, if there's other red flags that you want brought to your attention, it goes into those county financial policies, and that's how you execute your financial oversight. So the duties of a elected auditor, and just to be very clear, these are all in the auditor portion of the county statute, and they only apply to an elected auditor. I'm using this because it's what we currently have, so it's what you're used to. So if we're talking about a change, let's start with what we have and what it would look like going forward. So obviously, audit all the claims. So that happens through our financial system and by our accountants. And with our financial system, it's very streamlined, it's very regimented. There are multiple points of approval within the financial system before it even gets to the auditor's office itself. So that process, that does not need to change, and it shouldn't change, it works well, it requires documentation, it requires that things are charged to the correct line, it requires the financial policies are followed on, depending on the size of the purchase, that kind of stuff. Collect, analyze, and preserve statistical information. Again, done by the financial software at this point, and I would say that data is really used during the budget process. We look at last year's budget, you spent this much in postage, do you think you're going to spend that much again? Oh, you had this anomaly, that kind of stuff. So all of that data comes around for sure every budget cycle, and is very useful in that process. Approve all orders for supplies. So purchases are not approved before they're made, they're approved after they're made through the financial management software. The exceptions would be things that are ten thousand to thirty thousand, those require a requisition before they're purchased, that does go through the accountants, and is detailed processed in the county financial policies. And then purchases over thirty thousand require an RFP, and that process is supported by the executive's office, as outlined in the county financial policies. And none of that would need to change. Maintain a file of all contracts entered into by the county board and authorized county offices. This is a requirement of the financial management system. You cannot enter an invoice if the system does not include the contract already. And that is a piece that's audited by the accountants. So you'll get things bounced back to you very quickly if you try to pay a bill, and they have no record of the contract, because that looks really suspicious. Hence the county policy and the check and balance there. And again, that doesn't need to stay, that doesn't need to change, the accountants should still be checking for that on all invoices that go through. Report quarterly to the county board for the financial operations. I'm not going to read the whole statute. As the league mentioned, there's a ton of reports on our website, so you can see everything that's going on. The auditor does have his portion of the COW agenda, I believe, every month to show those reports. The posting in the newspaper publication, I could not find any indication that that's piece is being completed. And this process would not need to be adjusted if we removed the elected auditor component. And if the board wanted to update the financial policies to request different reports or different timing of reports, that's obviously something that we could easily do. Audit the receipts of all county offices and departments for deposit. So this is like cash deposit, literally, cold hard cash, from the offices that, you know, sell things or are charged for services. So this function is intentionally split between two offices. It's done by the treasurer's office, and then they ship their results and their documentation over to the auditor's office, and the auditor's office confirms that their analysis of the documentation matches the treasurer's findings, all the dollars are accounted for. I have been in conversations where there's been questions about four dollars, two dollars, so this is absolutely done, downed to the penny, and if cannot be accounted for, has to be explained very quickly as to where that money is. This process should absolutely remain and should never be removed, and it should maintain both offices. The treasurer's office, because they take in the cash, and then the auditor's office is that check and balance for editing, or for auditing that money. The external auditor also reviews this piece as part of their process as well. Maintain a continuous internal audit of the operations and financial records of the officers. So I, this is a bit of a vague statement, so I'm going to tell you how I interpreted this. I interpreted this to mean that we are doing audits of departments and funds continuously throughout the years, so that ideally, every couple of years, every fund and department is audited by us internally to make sure things are making sense. I'm not aware of this currently happening. Things are audited through the financial management system by the accountants as they are submitted and paid for, but there's no look back, or to pick up a fund and say, okay, we're going to audit this fund to determine what exactly is happening in this fund, and that it matches all the documentation that we have. I think that with additional accountant staffing, that's something we should seriously consider and implement for the best, you know, transparency and fiscal policy for us. Audit the inventory of all real and personal property owned. So the county auditor's office currently maintains a listing of property owned, inventory is audited every year. At the end of the year, a list is sent to the department head that says, here's what you are supposed to have in your department, tell us what you do and do not have, and that is sent back to the auditor, and the list is updated. In a dream world, if we had staffing, it would be great if every couple of years, every department was physically audited by an accountant who went and counted computers, and printers, and vehicles, and whatever else we need to physically audit. That's not something we have the staffing capacity for at this time, but I think would be an excellent goal. Audit the documentation, records, bases, basis for the amounts billed to the county as maintained by county vendors. This county auditor's office currently manages vendor information in the financial management software. Again, you can't submit a bill without a vendor. Like, you physically cannot click on anything until you start by selecting what vendor that bill goes to. It's a common complaint from the department heads, because it can get very tedious that they have to enter new vendors. I think that's kind of the point. So, you know, you listen sympathetically, and then you just remind them of how to enter the vendor. So you have to have a vendor, the vendor has to submit certain information to us, the auditor's office manages and maintains that information, and then at the end of the year, every year, we have to send out this form at ten ninety-nine to a vendor, which the auditor's office currently completes. This is all done by the accountants in their day-to-day management of the fiscal software, so that would not need to be changed. Be the general accountant for the county and keep its general accounts. Again, super vague. So general accountant not defined in the statute, general accounting functions, these are the ones that are kind of gap-assumed, so that's what I looked at. Accounts receivable for us are managed by the county treasurer's office. Payroll and financial analysis are completed in the county executive's office. Financial reporting is done by the auditor and the county executive, and accounts payable are completed by the county auditor's office. So the two areas that we would need to look at would be financial reporting and accounts payable, both currently being completed by accountants. So just depending on what structure we choose, that would remain a part of their job duty, unless you felt it needed to be changed. Devise and install a system of financial records in the offices and divisions of the county. The thing we keep talking about, our financial management software. So technically, it's a contract, and all contracts have to be approved by the board. So obviously, the auditor's office is involved in the RFP process and the recommendation, but the choice of the system ultimately falls on the county board, and... And the County Board approves the contracts, and they also approve, again, those county financial policies that we've been talking about. That would not change whether you had appointed, elected, or no auditor at all, that would remain the same. So, what would the referendum question look like? I included the one from McLean County, which they just approved last month. It looks like it's kind of a choose-your-own-adventure question, there's no statutory requirements on it, you can put whatever language you want in there. And then the Peoria one from 2022, where they reference their external auditors and the cost savings.
Thank you for the presentation. I think you all have the materials with you. Thanks, Michelle, appreciate it. All right, let's move on to just general discussion. Open to questions, Mr. Farney.
So since this is a study session, a lot of this is just me thinking out loud, so I'm just throwing things out here. One, without having seen something, even an outline of how we think Champaign County would organize a finance department if we moved duties from the Auditor's Office to the Executive's Department, it's hard for me to really know if I like the direction this is going. So I'd like to see, okay, yes, we're going to move all four of these accountants, they're all going to go here with the chief deputy, and that'll have a new title instead of a chief deputy, whatever it may be. I just, I'd like to see kind of an outline of this is what it would actually look like, and we've never actually seen something like that on an organization chart. So if at some point we could see that, that would be great. Back when we discussed this in December, yes, people had filed for office, we had not had a primary yet. And so I am somewhat in agreement with some of the comments that have been made tonight, that this isn't the right time to do this, since we have candidates on the ballot who went through the primary or the slating process, they're on the ballot, they're actively campaigning right now. It almost seems like we missed the vote if we wanted to do this. We're at the absolute last minute for putting things on the ballot. We barely have enough people for a quorum at this meeting tonight. It just does not appear that this Board or the general public really want to see this on the ballot. So that's another thing that is just observing it. I'm not saying I support that or I'm against it, I'm just saying this is what I'm observing. The, where was I going with this? Some of the discussion about the duties of the office, and one of the things that I'm really interested in, and I'm in a unique position since I held that office, we do not have the staff to do internal audits that people think of when they think of an audit. The Auditor's Office, right now in Champaign County, the way it's set up, it is an accounts payable office, okay? That's what it is, no matter what anybody else says, no matter if the County Auditor could come in right now and tell us all these great things he's doing, yet he's an accounts payable, he's the head of the accounts payable office. Paying the head of the accounts payable office $100,000 a year seems a bit excessive, but that's what it is. And that's what it was when I was there, I'm saying it. So I think we need to look at, if we have the opportunity to change things, we need to build a robust audit function, not accounts payable function, but actually audit things. Winnebago County is a fantastic example of how to do that. The Winnebago County Auditor's Office, if you go onto his website right now, it's just double-checking it, they do surprise audits, they do annual audits of equipment, of materials, whatever it may be. They actually go and audit things, they have, when I was in office, the chief deputy there was an actual forensic auditor. This guy, he, the things he knew, it was fantastic. But you have to prioritize that as a County Board and give people, give that office the employees and the finances to do that. We are not in a position to do that right now. But if you want an actual robust audit function, we've got to make that a priority. Right now, it's an account payable office. I guess just to sum up, you know, I appreciate everything that was said tonight. I was part of the study with the League of Women Voters, I went and met with them back when it was first commissioned, and it was a, it was a great process. And I think there's some merit to having this discussion, and I support letting voters have a say on their government, but I don't think the timing is right right now. And so if it was put up for us to put on a vote today, I would actually say no.
Mike?
Thanks, Steve. This is just observations, trying to understand, understand there's a lot of history on it. But I pulled Article 7 of the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and under Section 4, county officers, what it says is each county shall, under Item C, under Section 4, it says each county shall elect a sheriff, county clerk, and treasurer, so those are required, I get that, and may elect or appoint a coroner, recorder, assessor, auditor, and other such officers as provided by law or by county ordinance. So to say that the auditor really isn't addressed in the state constitution, it just says that you may, it can be a choice. So it is uttered, muttered, or stuttered, even though it's not a requirement. So I guess from the position that we were taking, I didn't expect to see that. So it is something that is a recommendation that could be considered. So I'm, okay, 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 I'm making too much out of this. So what I did is I went and I got the Champaign County job description for auditor and compared it against Statute 55 ICLS 5-3, 1001, that Michelle did a great job listing, all of those things. And I'll just say there's more things in our job description, they don't really line up one-to-one, at least for, at least for what's clear to me. So my observation is, we should take a look at that job description, take a look at this statute, make sure there isn't other things that would be done. I'm still not clear on, when I look at the auditor job position, it's like, oh, okay, I'm with Mr. Farney. It might not be a bad idea, I think the timing's horrible. And if it was push, come to shove, right now, is the county ready for it? I don't see it on the observation, trying to get things to line up. It would seem to throw a monkey wrench into things, into county business operation. Thank you.
Jenny?
Bringing up the job description for that reminds me that for an elected, we can make a recommendation, but they don't have to follow it, right? That that's not required of them to run their office in the way that we request that they run it?
Wilson?
Thank you, Steve, and Mr. Farney, thank you for adding more grist to the mill. If, so I'm thinking, so it's a study session, so I'm studying in process while discussing. If the current practical function of the auditor is an accounts payable office or function, and what I understand what you're saying, Mr. Farney, is that's really due to the limitations of staff, not necessarily to a lack of performance of the auditor himself, but it's, in fact, it's a staffing item, which requires more resources. And it would be reasonable to assume, as a county organization, that, they said, I don't know what they said, 200 million, I think it's what, 150 or something like that million for our county, 200 million for our county, 50 million, general budget function, whatever, then either way, if we really wanted a robust function, it's going to require more staffing and more funding out of the budget for that staff. And then number two, that could either be an auditor function under the auspices of the executive, or it also could be that the elected office of auditor could also add additional staff and create a more robust auditing function rather than accounts payable. Am I thinking clearly, or am I missing something?
So, I was just jotting down notes, actually, along those same lines, and I go back to Winnebago County. Okay, Winnebago County, they don't, their audit staff doesn't do anything with accounts payable other than spot-check things. Kankakee County, their Auditor's Office has an elected auditor, and that's it. His job, that's, that's it, his job, he gets us basically the stack of bills, and he can make of it what he wants to do. Accounts payable is handled by, in their administrative suite. Tazewell County is the same way right now. Tazewell County has an elected auditor, and everything else is handled in another area. If this is something the County Board feels like, it's a, it could be a process of moving us towards something like that, can be handled through the budget process. I brought it up at our last meeting, it's time for us to take charge of our budget as the County Board. Okay, we control the budget for all elected officials, it's our job. So if things are going to start getting tight around here, tighter than they already are, that can be part of our job. We can go and say, you know what, we're going to move some things around, that is an option. It, it's, again, it would be something I'd want to see on paper and see how it's going to work first, but just because it's been done this way since 1954 doesn't mean we have to keep doing it that way. And it could be that, okay, accounts payable goes to administrator's office, and you have an elected auditor, maybe one employee, and by God, boys, your job is to actually do audits, and that's what we expect to see from you. And if you're not doing it, vote that auditor out of office and vote in somebody that will do it.
Follow-up, so?
No, I'm sorry, Chair Carter had the next question, next comment.
So I'm learning as I'm going, you know, it's the joy of living, it's just we always are learning. So I think what I'm hearing you say is that there are some functions that are happening within the auditor's kingdom, realm, whatever, his job description, that's really should be carried out by other groups, whether it's accounts payable, and then based upon what Michelle Jet said, there's some things that the Treasurer's doing that maybe the auditor should be doing, or should go to another spot, I was just trying to navigate through that. But if I went back to what you said, you know, as a discussion, I almost like that, if I have one auditor and one support staff, and all they do is do what they're supposed to do, which is audit, even continuously, I guess, if you could do it continuously, that just almost seems palatable to me, if that makes sense. I don't know if I'm going in the right direction or not.
Chair Carter, did you still have a question?
Yeah, I did just speak with, right now, we're playing with emails. So if certain people on the Board don't want to participate in a meeting, they won't reply to an email. So for the record, I do want to have a study session, I would like to set up a meeting with Ms. Susan Martel and Deb Bucy and Ms. Tricia Crowley, because I just feel like this is just one-sided. If we are going to actively look at the whole spectrum, I think everyone should be included. I look at this as a power grab, given all executive powers, given all powers to our executive, and I think what you stand for is contradicting what you basically just sat here and described what democracy is today. So I'm kind of conflicted, but I would, on the record, like to set up an additional meeting with you all, so we can further discuss our plan moving forward. Thank you.
Generally, process for study sessions involve both caucus chairs. So you're free to commit to whatever meeting you want to individually, but both caucus chairs generally have to confer on holding a study session. Go ahead, Ellie.
So picking up on the recent suggestion or hypothetical restructuring that we have one elected auditor and move accounts payable staff under administration, what would that auditor be doing differently than the external auditor in that scenario? Like, would that be a full-time job? Because if we still have an, I mean, we have to have an external audit, right? So, mislock?
I hate that I'm somehow the audit expert. The external audit's only actual duty is to give people who give us debt, or any, or the public at large, assurances that our finances and what we, the numbers that we report are reasonably true. Just, it's reasonable, that's, so they're not actually going in there looking for, that's why in Dixon, the external audit didn't find it. They ended up paying because it was so much, but that's why the external audit never found it, because their only job is to show that the numbers that we are telling everybody are reasonable. So having somebody in-house who could actually really audit, like, we're getting, we're getting pulled in by the IRS as public people, or private people, and they're going through the books, having someone in-house who could do that within departments, if that's what they're doing in Winnebago, man, I need to go to Winnebago, that's awesome. That would be fantastic, and actually showing the public that we're looking out for their
Go ahead, Leah.
Thank you. I don't know, man, this is a lot. My note so far is, I, I understand where you're coming from, JJ, about the timing and stuff, like, but at the same time, thinking about it, to me, this seems like a good time to ask the voters, because we're in a presidential election cycle, they're more engaged, they're more informed, they're looking closely at more races and more questions. Otherwise, what, we have the municipals in the spring, which basically nobody votes in, and then we have two years from now, the midterms, which not as many people are engaged, which we want to have the most informed and the most engaged population possible voting on something like this, because it is, it is a big change. I am really interested in possibly doing like an accounts payable department under admin, I don't know if that's something we can investigate or look at, it makes a lot of sense, I think. And, and doing, if the, if we do put the resolution on the ballot, or the question on the ballot, I think it would be, and it doesn't pass, I think that would be a good thing to look at, as well as the one auditor and aide kind of thing, until we can create more of a forensic kind of proper auditing system in the county. I think, I mean, I'll be off the board at that point, though, so what do I know?
Emily?
This would be more of a question for Michelle, and then I've got some thoughts. The kind of robust rethinking that JJ is talking about here, is that possible under an elected auditor right now?
Yes, yes. And we, I think the county is at the size and financial expenditure rate that a purchasing department would be a very cost-saving measure for us. Right now, each department purchases things on their own in smaller quantities, at whatever volume and quality and quantity they want, and if we consolidated that into larger purchasing, I think we could save a lot of money in that fashion as well.
Thanks. Okay, I just wanted to note here, before I kind of get into my thoughts, in particular, Michelle's presentation noted a lot of my concerns about consolidation of power in the administrative area. Many people know I really, really wanted home rule, I wanted it real bad, and I pushed a conversation on it for some time. It didn't happen, and I am glad that it didn't happen. I don't think this Board's ready for it, to be honest. But it does, my overarching concern with pushing forward home rule is because we have this new empowered position of the county executive, and the County Board was not similarly empowered, right? And home rule would do that. But it, so my overarching concern about continued power being pushed into the Executive's Office seems to be answered here, and that the County Board has multiple opportunities for oversight here, and to check in and to offer feedback. So we seem to be similarly empowered here, and that concern is assuaged for me. My next kind of comments kind of get a little bit into rhetoric and Aristotle, which is, I'm going to try to not go that route, but, that route. But it seems to me like we are talking a lot about Kairos, right? And Aristotle. And Aristotle talked about this, like the timing of things. What are we ready for and when? When do we put this on the ballot? Is the, are voters ready for that? Are we prepared enough to begin to explore this? It seems to me that we do have time to prepare for this, to run through, to not only look at other models, but come up with the, with the chart and see how we could move things around. The next thing I want to talk about is the preparedness of voters. This to me seems like a funny one and a sticking point. I don't know how we determine whether voters are ready. I think we are talking a lot about other questions on. Let me recalibrate here, okay. I think we're talking quite a bit about whether this, whether we're going to get the result that we want, right? But that's a different question on whether or not the public is actually ready for it. And something I wanted to, again, I'm thinking about this kind of rhetorically here, if you look at the way that this, this public, that this is listed here, it ends with the savings would approximately be X, Y, Z. This would be appearing on the ballot with the public safety sales tax, would it not? Both examples have the savings, though, listed.
It's not required, that's just how they chose to do it, so.
So I'm saying, again, we're thinking about how this would look on a ballot, put forward to the public. I think the argument is clear, we would be getting money and saving money. I think that's the overall argument that that would be making by listing them together. So as far as being ready, I think we are, I think we've got a stronger argument than we ever have. And I'm not sure how we tell voters that they're not ready to decide something. So I would be in favor of putting this on the ballot.
Ellie.
Just a question to clarify the cost-saving piece of that, though. Would, if we're not eliminating the position, then where is the cost-saving coming from? Are we just saying this person's going to have a lower salary? Because, I, I mean, I guess, if, if we're talking about putting something on the ballot, like, is the question to eliminate the position or to eliminate as an elected position? Because I don't see a cost-saving if we're just making it appointed, because we still have to pay the person, right? So I, I don't know, if you or Michelle or somebody has a.
I'm not arguing to add the salary, I'm saying that we've listed this as a concern several times. What's the argument that we're making? How are we educating the public? How does this appear on the ballot? To me, we have had two counties come forward and list the savings. Whether or not we choose to do that is up in the air. I guess that's, that's where my mind is at right now, though. But maybe Michelle has an answer to that.
I have sneezes for you. Well, I, I think, and this might not be the road we want to go down, but I think there is a very philosophical difference between paying for an elected official and paying for staff. And I think there's cost savings when you're paying for staff versus paying for elected officials. But I think that would require somewhat of an idea from the board to know, are they leaning towards just eliminating the position altogether? Or are they looking more towards transitioning into an actual auditor? And any, any ideas of what that structure would look like? But I do, I don't think that it's dishonest to say that there's cost savings, because again, if you're transitioning from a position that you have no authority over and you cannot require any level of work from, to positions that you have the ability to terminate for lack of work, you are saving money. It does, cost savings to me, so.
Go ahead, Erin.
Thanks. So a few thoughts. I guess I too have kind of a issue with timing, not just in part because we already have candidates from both parties, but also looking at the calendar year. Early voting starts the end of September. That's, it's not going to happen this month, obviously. So if it happens the next month in July, that's two months later people start voting. We're in the mid, we're starting budget, basically in the middle of budgeting, budget process, and stuff like that here at the county. So that would be an additional kind of timing issue that I can kind of see, just, I don't know if we have enough time to get everything together. And then a few other, another thought, kind of, I guess, it sounds like we could, you know, it would be with approval of the county board. So it sounds like we could, you know, make that fairly robust. You know, I don't know if we could put in like a, you know, a super majority of some kind as opposed to a, if so desired, obviously, as opposed to just a simple majority approval, what that's, you know, I'm not, don't know what that super majority would be or something. And then also got to thinking about, you know, maybe a biannual, I think that's how I'm going to say it, every other year, review by the county board of their job performance. You know, at, whether that be by the whole county board, it is kind of a special meeting or just, you know, those that wish to, you know, here's a form, you can go online through email and send it in with your thoughts on what that person would or wouldn't be doing right, how they're doing their job. Because I remember doing that under the administrative forum under Ms. Bucy, doing that for John Hall specifically, but I know that got done with other department heads at the time. So those are just some thoughts, but yeah, there's pros and cons with everything, of course. I can see both sides of this, having good points and bad points. Most, every decision in life has a good and a bad point. Even, even if it's trivial, there is something you could probably think of in your own head that, well, you know, I could be doing this instead. So I'm not opposed to looking at it as farther, it's just, you have, the biggest thing I think for me would be timing, and, thanks.
Jenny, then Ellie.
Okay, following up on timing, I guess this raises another question for me. If we weren't putting this on the ballot in a year when the auditor's being elected, what happens then? Like, say it is in the midterm elections, do you then say, okay, you're out of a job as of two years into your term? Like, how does that work?
I believe the board can specify what those timelines would be. Ellie.
Just some thoughts now that I've asked all my specific questions. In terms of timing, yeah, I mean, I can see, I can see why it doesn't feel like a good time, but it also, I, I feel like in government, it's easy to always say it's not the right time, so let's push it off, and then it never happens. And I do agree with Ms. Taylor's points about it being a presidential election year and voter turnout, and if we are going to put something to the voters, the most democratic thing to do is to put it out there when the most people are paying attention and voting. I think, I, I agree with a lot of what my colleagues have expressed and questions asked in terms of what are the different possibilities of restructuring here? And yes, it would be very helpful to see that laid out in an org chart in different scenarios. And so I think the question of timing is really actually a question for us and our administration. Can those different scenarios be presented to us in the next month? And if so, then yes, we do have time to evaluate those and vote on whether we want to put it to the voters in time for the November election. I do think, I understand candidates are running, but I also, I, I agree with Jenny to the point that I, it's also not very nice to have someone elected and then two years into your term, sorry. So there's never a good time, and, and that is just the, the nature of elections. In terms of just the, the information that has been shared tonight and, you know, that were made available to us over time, it definitely seems like we need some restructuring. And yeah, accounts payable should absolutely be in, under administration, does not need to be under an elected official. And would love to hear more about the Winnebago example and see those options. You know, I've, the, the county is, is, is large. I've worked for the university, which is an even larger public Illinois institution. And believe me, the business offices that you work with serve as an internal audit. They will tell you, you cannot do X, Y, and Z, and I was constantly at odds with my business office, even though they were not the external auditor. So it's very, very doable to have those internal checks within a public government institution within an administrative unit as long as it's set up properly. And so I think that's what we really need to look at.
Chair Carter.
Honestly, I don't think the administrative staff are capable of even pulling this task together in this short amount of time that they have put forth this effort in eliminating the auditor's and the coroner's position. I don't think that there will be any real cost savings where there has been some positions in the auditor's office that is no longer, that, that, that are vacant. So I don't see by, you know, not having him in the office would cost any, or would save anything when we still need employees and staff to cover the work of the auditor's position. Right now, I just think that, and I want to agree with Mr. Wilson, there is so much coming forth to the voters. We got gas tax, we got public safety sales tax, we want to eliminate the coroner's position and the auditor's position. All of this feels rushed, it feels personal. And like I said, once again, I don't think, i- if you think the auditor's office is a mess now, I think it would get even messier with the executive and the administrative staff over that, that office. So I just don't think that it's a good move. I don't think that we should give those powers to the executive's office, the administrative staff, it should be left up to our voters. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, County Executive. I liked the discussion we're having tonight. I think we're kicking around ideas in our brain that maybe were not available before, if it makes sense. I mean, what I'm saying is, the discussion and some of the, brings out more information. And I did read the Legal Women Voters Report, and I commend them for issuing that report back in 2022. But when I think about what Mr. Farnie had said, I think it sheds a more light on there, I think there's some gaps in that report that could have maybe looked at an alternative structure or how to maybe streamline the function of the auditor, so the auditor only audits only, period, end of statement. So all these things are kicking in my brain, and I would like to know more about Winnebago County. It seems like it, it could be a model for us versus Lake County. I mean, there's 755,000 people in Lake County, they're like almost three times the size of us, and maybe they have a lot more money than we do. But I think where, this is my perspective, and it would be remiss, it'd be terrible for me to say that everyone thinks this. It seems like we're still forming and storming, trying to figure out what the right course of action is with respect to the auditor's function and what the auditor can or cannot do. That's where I think we are, at least that's where I am. And maybe if going with Mr. Farnie said about the county board being more empowered to make decisions on roles and responsibilities and implementing those roles and responsibilities, maybe that's more of the answer than voting to eliminate the elected office. And I'm not going to make a decision because we're discussing, not making a decision, that's not the appropriate point. I'm just telling you what's going on in my brain, that maybe there's timing or not timing, there's never a good time for anything, frankly. But I just think it might behoove us to figure out where we're really going with this. And how do we want to see the structure of our government that works in the county? Just, just thoughts, that's all.
Mike.
Yeah, and to just carry that on, that, that restructuring of everything, I was lining up the ordinance for purchasing that the county has, which the job description for the auditor appears to more closely reflect, that we look at that and, and look at what the people, where we have them, where could those other duties under the auditor be reassigned? Make sure we don't, we're already, we have talked about being short on staff and not enough people to do what we need done in a timely fashion. So it's just a thought to keep in mind.
Ms. Taylor.
I just want to go back to what our chair said a few minutes ago and just kind of make a point of clarification for the public that are watching. We are not discussing getting rid of the coroner. That hasn't been a topic of conversation for probably six months. We're not discussing that. This is all about the office of the auditor. Coroner is not part of this, as far as I know, nobody on the board has brought that up for quite a while.
JJ.
So I guess I have more of a procedure question. Am I correct, this would have to be done in July if it was going to be put to vote by the board?
I would think that would be the appropriate timeline, yeah.
So we don't have committee meetings in July? So are we going to give some direct direction to administration to put it on the agenda tonight? Is that what we're doing? Or how do we bring tonight's meeting to a close, I guess is what I'm getting at?
This is general discussion and information being provided. This meeting was called after discussion with both caucus chairs, so I'd assume that would follow the same format. Michelle is waving her arm back there, so Michelle?
Yeah, if I, I'll just make a proposal. So it sounds like we want to hear different potential structures, and we want to see how other counties have structured their finance and/or auditor's offices. So I can pull all of that together in the next week or two and send that out in an email so people can see it ahead of time. We don't need to have an email dialogue, but so everyone has it and can start digesting it. And I would propose that you put the referendum question on the agenda for July so you can have the conversation. You do not have to vote on it, but you can have the discussion. You can send me any follow-up questions to the proposals, and I can get that information put together, continue to send that out so everyone has the information before they come to the meeting. And then we can do the conversation again in July, and you can determine if you want to make a vote or not. Technically, you have until mid-August to pass the referendum or resolution and file it with the county clerk, but I think that would probably involve a special meeting, so I don't think anyone really wants to do that.
Chair Carter.
As a point of clarification, from the beginning, it was the auditor in the coroner's position, and the coroner was thrown in there because we didn't want to, just point the finger at the auditor because we were trying to eliminate the auditor. So now it is the auditor's position that we are going to put on the ballot. So I would like to clarify that. So that's the reason why the coroner was thrown in there, because we wanted to deflect the, the whole purpose of eliminating the auditor's position. So I just wanted to make that for the record. Thank you.
Seeing nothing else, we have no further business, so we are adjourned. Thank you.